Good evening. Workshop council meeting for the city of Copper's Cove held September 2nd, 2025 is called to order at 5:30 PM. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey?
Here.
Christina Strovis?
Here.
Rita Hogan?
Here.
Sean Alzona?
Here.
John Hale?
Here.
Del Chudway?
Here.
Vanya Hart? Jack Smith?
Here.
All right. Item C, announcements.
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. We have a few town halls that are coming up. And the first town hall is this coming Saturday on the street maintenance utility. This will be focused for commercial customers and businesses. And my calendar, there we go. The next town hall is the following Monday on September 8th. And all of these, and that's at 6:00 PM. All of these town halls will be here in the council chambers and then a subsequent town hall on September 10th.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Smith?
No announcements.
All right. We will move to item D, public recognition.
Item one, employee service awards, September 2025. Ryan Havelas, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and council, it's the first meeting of our month and we're going to recognize some really amazing team members today. And if you didn't see the agenda, that was just up on the screen. We're talking well over 100 years in experience. It's pretty amazing. But we're going to start off with Mr. Joshua Simmons, Chief Plant Operator with our wastewater treatment department, celebrating five years of service. There's Josh. Joshua was hired by the city of Copper's Cove as an operator in the wastewater treatment department on September 8, 2020. He quickly promoted to Chief Plant Operator and was assigned to the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant in March of 2022, where he continues to serve our community. Josh's dedication and work experience have assisted him in promoting to a supervisor position. His job skills and techniques are amazing due to his knowledge and expertise. Josh routinely trains new employees, working beside them with encouragement and guidance. His ability to deal with people and operators is good, as he is always clear, precise, and easily gets his point across to others. Josh is an excellent motivator, trainer, and all-around great guy, and he has an amazing smile. There it is, see? He has earned the Safe Driver Incentive for multiple years and is an active participant in the city's COFIT wellness program. Josh is a graduate of the city's Development and Leadership Academy, class number three. His supervisor stated in a recent evaluation that Joshua is highly motivated and is an all-around great asset to the city. Josh has had a lot of experiences since working for the city. Not all positive, but he continues to smile and do amazing work within the city. Josh, thank you for your service to our city. Next, we celebrate with Jose Velasco. He was a custodian with our police department, celebrating 20 years of service. Jose was hired by the city of Copper's Cove as a laborer for the Parks and Recreation Department on September 19, 2005. He promoted to Light Equipment Operator in June of 2009, and Jose later transferred to the Animal Control Department in July of 2011, where he serves as an... Serves, sorry, Kevin. I read that wrong. Where he served as the Animal Control Officer and Kennel Lieutenant. In July of 2014, Jose transferred to the Police Department, where he currently serves as the position, in the position of custodian. Jose completes tasks within a reasonable amount of time. He manages a very tight schedule to ensure the facilities he is responsible for are properly cleaned and sanitized weekly. Jose is friendly and courteous. He works independently throughout the day. Occasionally, he has even taken on the initiative to complete tasks that are not necessarily assigned to him. Jose has earned the Safe Driver Incentive and is an active participant in the city's COFIT wellness program. His supervisor stated on a recent evaluation that Jose takes a great amount of pride in his job, is always on time, and can be counted on to complete the task on his schedule. And he is a very familiar and friendly face around the entire city. Jose, thank you for your 20 years of service to the city. Next, we celebrate with Chad Quair, Chief Plant Operator, Wastewater Treatment Department, celebrating 20 years of service. Man, that is such a massive beard. I wish I could do that, Chad. You make it look good. Chad was hired by the city of Copper's Cove as a laborer in the Parks and Recreation Department on September 8, 2005. He transferred to an operator position in the wastewater treatment department in April of 2012, and later promoted to Chief Plant Operator in November of 2018, where he currently serves at the South Plant. Chad continues to be a reliable supervisor for the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, and he is a great leader who is able to train and educate his team members. He exceeds his responsibility for all reporting, annual inspections, and following the regulatory correspondence with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Chad's knowledge is wonderful, not only with his assigned plant, but with the other two plants as well. He has great judgment skills, and Chad is a graduate of the city's Development and Leadership Academy, class number five. His supervisor stated on his recent evaluation that Chad is the senior chief plant operator in the city. He is a great leader who can always be counted on for anything. Chad, thank you for your amazing service to our city and community. And while they're taking a picture, Chad does the stuff that nobody else wants to touch and do. So, well done, Chad. Next, we celebrate with Thomas Brooks, Jr. I didn't know you were a junior. Oh. He's a superintendent with our wastewater treatment plant, celebrating 20 years of service also. Thomas was hired by the city of Copper's Cove as an operator in the wastewater treatment department on September 2nd, 2005. He promoted to Chief Plant Operator in November of 2018, and was more recently promoted to the wastewater treatment supervisor, superintendent in February of 2021, where he continues to oversee the department. Thomas continues to be a reliable superintendent over three wastewater treatment plants, where he exceeded the TCEQ plant permit requirements. His extensive knowledge for all reporting, annual inspections, and regulatory correspondence with TCEQ for all the plants is evident. As a superintendent, Thomas is also responsible for the department's budget, submitting invoices, and personnel-related matters. He is heavily relied upon to make sound judgments within his department. Additionally, Thomas is a graduate of the city's Development and Leadership Academy, class number one. He's an OG. His supervisor stated on his recent evaluation that Thomas's dependability to ensure the operational goals of the department are met and are essential to the department's mission. He is flexible, adapts well to changes, and is a true asset to our city. Thomas, thank you for 20 amazing years with the city. Next, we celebrate with Shannon Thompson, Executive Secretary with the Police Department, celebrating 25 years of service. Shannon, that's a quarter of a century. Isn't that awesome? I don't know why she's upset. She would have said it first. Shannon was hired by the city of Copper's Cove as a communications operator with the Police Department on September 30, 2000. She promoted to records supervisor in July of 2016, and later again to executive secretary in February of 2022, where she continues to serve. Shannon once received the deputy chief's coin in December of 2006 for maintaining professionalism and job continuity during a traumatic experience that took place at the Police Department. Additionally, she was nominated as the 2008 Crime Stopper Communications Officer of the Year in March of 2008. In her newest role, Shannon works closely and effectively with both the budget and finance departments. She has gained a good understanding and proper use of her resources. Shannon has great, work, great, great working relationships. See, there's a smile again. With all team members, both within the Police Department and all city departments. In her spare time, Shannon attended and is a graduate of the city's Development and Leadership Academy, class number one. Another OG? Yeah. Her supervisor stated on her recent evaluation that Shannon is one of our most experienced and tenured employees. She treats members of the department as she would her own family. She has my trust to always represent myself and the department in a positive manner. Shannon, thank you for an amazing 25 years of service to our city and community.
And I heard you, Larry.
Next, Mayor and Council, we celebrate with Roger Bécress, who is our superintendent with the Fleet Services Department, also celebrating 25 years. Sorry, Roger, I got to be consistent. That's a quarter of a century. Yeah. Roger was hired by the city of Copper's Cove as a mechanic with the Fleet Services Department on September 25, 2000. He promoted to Lead Mechanic in September of 2010, and later again to Fleet Services Superintendent in February of 2022, where he continues to serve. Roger received the Blue Seal of Excellence from ASE, which is Automotive Service Excellence, on January 17, 2003, for his exemplary knowledge of the industry. He also once received a letter of commendation from the fire chief for his assistance in repairing the department's aerial ladder during testing by UL, which is Underwriters Laboratories, so the inspection could continue. Roger is an expert mechanic and has demonstrated the ability to analyze, identify, and repair all manner of fleet issues, resulting in city cost savings along the way. He routinely demonstrates the ability to adequately make sound decisions after consideration of all relevant facts, including discovering alternative repair methods that have saved the city unnecessary expenses. Roger has always been a team player and is a graduate of the city's Development and Leadership Academy, class number two. His supervisor stated on his recent evaluation that Roger is industrious and consistent. He has demonstrated initiative to enhance his and his team's interdepartmental communication and has enhanced succession planning activities to ensure his second-in-command secures experience in all areas. Roger is truly dedicated to his position and the city. Roger, your dedication has truly shown. Thank you for service of 25 years to us. Mayor, that concludes our service awards for this evening.
Retirement recognition. Ryan Havelas, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and council, it is with great honor that I get to recognize Anita Schultz as she makes her decision to retire from city service after 23 years. Anita began her employment with the city of Copper's Cove as a part-time library assistant to in the library department on September 10, 2001. She was hired as a full-time library assistant position in June of 2002, where she continued to serve with pride and dedication until her retirement just last week, on August 29th. With 23-plus years of experience with the city, Anita has been a dedicated team member who has, who was always willing to serve the community. Along with coworkers Valerie Reynolds and Martha Di, Anita is a proud member of the Three Amigos. The three had self-labeled themselves many years ago, as they were the only staff members of the library for a time. True story. The Three Amigos leaned on each other and supported one another in good times and bad, and continue to have a deep bond to this day. Anita was nominated by her director and selected as the Employee of the Quarter for the second quarter of 2012. Comments from her nomination stated, "Anita is the glue that holds the library staff together and ensures that everything runs as smooth as possible." She was always, she was also selected to receive the Unity Award in February of 2015 for going above and beyond. Anita is one of those rare individuals who takes on additional duties with ease and completes them to perfection. Her work with finance and budget processes was always exemplary and a great benefit to the library team. Her supervisor once commented during an evaluation that Anita has been loyal and trustworthy, both professionally and personally, and has proven herself to be a true asset to the city. Anita has been more than just a coworker. She is a friend and a trusted presence with the city of Copper's Cove and the public library. Anita, on behalf of the city, I wish you the very best in your retirement. Long future years, enjoying all that you want to do. And I truly enjoyed working with you when I was at the library. We had a lot of fun. Yes, we did. So, thank you, Anita, and we congratulate you on your retirement. So, we, we have a framed art that Anita has picked out that has her retirement and service dates on the picture frame as well, presented by Library Director Kevin Marsh. We also have a mayor's coin. Where's the gift card? Thank you. And, and Mr. Marsh is going to turn around and grab the, is it the envelope? There we go. And we have a gift card for the number of years of service that Anita served with our community. Anita, congratulations. Where's the Three Amigos? There they are. Mayor and council, Ms. Anita has chosen not to say anything. She's wise. She's wise.
You're still standing up. You have the option. We move to item D3.
Proclamation, Storm Water Pollution Awareness Week. Dan Yancey, Mayor.
City of Copper's Cove proclamation. Whereas polluted water discharged into creeks, rivers, and lakes can result in the death of fish, the destruction of wildlife habitats, a loss of aesthetic value, and contamination of drinking water sources and recreational waterways can threaten public health. And whereas the Clean Water Act of 1972 prohibits the discharge of any pollutant into or adjacent to waters of the United States unless authorized by the Environmental Protection Agency through the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And whereas major source of pollutants into the waters of the United States has polluted urban and suburban stormwater runoff. And whereas most common sources of urban and suburban stormwater pollution are household hazardous chemicals, yard and pet waste, automotive chemicals, trash, and silt. And whereas it is imperative that pollutants be prevented from entering into the stormwater runoff within, within and adjacent to the city of Copper's Cove to help, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Now therefore, I, Dan Yancey, Mayor of City of Copper's Cove, do hereby proclaim the week of September 8 through 12, 2025, as Storm Water Pollution Awareness Week in the city of Copper's Cove. And let it be known that the city council of the city of Copper's Cove are just all citizens of this city to take, to make efforts to reduce storm water pollution.
Thank you, Mayor, for the kind words, and thank you, Council, City Manager. We have Brandon Cook here with us. He's the MS4 technician, one of our inspectors for the city. We have two positions, one's vacant, should be filled here pretty soon. A little bit of background on stormwater. Stormwater, as Mayor Yancey said, you know, it rains and everything drains, right? You've seen the slogans, "When it rains, it drains," right? So, just want everybody to be cognizant of those things, whether it's oil in your driveway or grass clippings in the street. But it's more than that. We are permitted by the state to maintain our MS4, and we are the regulatory entity for that MS4, which Brandon here and other code enforcement officers enforce. It's important. It's, it's, we are regulated by the state. And I would just add that there's more to it as far as inspections of inlets, new subdivisions, construction, as far as land disturbance areas, things of that nature. So, there's a lot more to it, and I invite the public to look at our annual report, which is online, it's on our website. Each year, it includes all of the different best management practices in each column, and they can see exactly what the requirements are and what we do to inspect it and enforce. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right. There are no workshop items to be discussed tonight, so the time is 5:53. We will adjourn. We will begin our regular meeting at 6 o'clock.
How are you doing?
Tired today.
Quite a bit of rest there today, huh?
There was a lot there yesterday.
I started walking in the building, and I saw her inside the room, and I saw her, and I said, "I'm just gonna get my bad side."
Oh, my goodness.
So I stayed out in the lobby, but I could hear everything you were saying.
Okay, good, good.
If everybody take their seat. Good evening. Regular council meeting for the City of Coppers Cove, held September 2nd, 2025, is called to order at 6:03 PM. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Tredway, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, Father, thank you for this day which you have given us. Thank you for this wonderful weather. I ask you to bless this council as we do the city's work, everything we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Please join in pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancy?
Here.
Christina Strophas?
Here.
Rita Hogan?
Here.
Sean Alzona?
Here.
John Hale?
Here.
Del Tredway?
Here.
Panya Hart? Jack Smith?
Here.
All right. The quorum is present. We move to item D announcements. Ms. Strophas?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. Our street maintenance utility town halls are coming up. The first one is this Saturday on September 7th at 10:00 AM here in the council chambers. That will be focused on commercial customers. September 8th and September 10th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, those will be residential, or focused on residential. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hale?
I have nothing. Thanks, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Jack?
No announcements.
All right. We will move on to item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Pursuant to Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum? State your name and address.
I am, uh... Sorry, sir. My name is Sergeant Holly Johnson. I am with the Purple Heart Chapter 1876, and I am here tonight to bring to your forum and to your city that we are doing a Purple Heart Ball, February 21st, 2026, in your city. And we were wanting to cordially invite you to our ball and to get our community involved. So, I have a flyer, as well as my business card for you, sir, to cordially invite you and to have our community help us with our fundraiser for this ball.
All right, thank you.
Daniel Hallbecker, 606 North 17th Street. Last council meeting, y'all had a discussion on a proposed development off the Lutheran Church Road. And the developer came up here and requested that the city help pay for the CCM rights from Kempner. I have an issue with that. The first one being that this gentleman is voluntarily requesting to be annexed in the city. He knows that that was going to be part of the deal if he gets annexed into the city. The second one is our water rates have been going up the last few years, and within this last budget that y'all approved last council meeting, by the time 2030 comes around, I'm looking probably at 50% more increase on my water rates. I don't mind paying a little bit for, you know, capital improvement projects that need to be done, for infrastructure that's been in the ground for years. But I do have a problem with the development coming in here, and they don't pay nothing. Granted, they invest the money, but they're getting that money back when they sell these homes and stuff. So, what I would recommend is that y'all take a look at the meter set fees and the sewer fees that y'all charge for new homes. Right now, they barely cover the cost of going out there, putting a meter in the ground, and, you know, the personnel that's out there. I would recommend, on top of what you're charging now, at least $2,000 more on meter set fees, and $1,000 more on sewer. The other thing that wasn't mentioned during that discussion was the impact that it has on purchasing water. Y'all just had, earlier this year, a gentleman come up here and was gonna try to sell water to the city. I think it was gonna end up being like $9 million. That's a big impact on the city. And every time you have a new house built, that puts an impact on that water purchases that y'all have right now. So, I would like that to be looked at. And the last thing I will say is, we have the highest water rates in this area. I was just told that we did have the highest property tax rate, but I was just told earlier that Colleen boosted theirs up higher than ours. But over the years, we usually had the highest property tax rates. I don't, I think the developer needs to take some of the burden off us existing customers and taxpayers. They're making money off their developments, or they wouldn't be investing that much money into it. That's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donald Andrew, and I live at 1,002 Stewart Street. I first came to this area when I was in the Army, back in 1958. So, I've been around this area probably longer than most of you have been alive. My problem, not problem, but my concern about Coppers Cove is the fact that we seem to be going in the wrong direction as far as code enforcement. It bothers me when there is something on the books that says, if the backyard of property does not count, they can do anything they want to. If it is visible from the street, it ought to be maintained, or it should be a privacy fence or something. As we drive up Veterans Avenue, all the way up to the top of the hill, there are probably every property on that street, not every, but 99% of them is unsightly. There's brush laying in the yard, there's apartment buildings that have huge mounds of furniture stacked up by the street. We all see it every time we drive by. Code enforcement sees it every time they drive up the hill. I live on the corner of Veterans and Stewart. I'm not gonna name the property, but it's probably the most famous property that code enforcement gets calls on. The only time that that family or that man mows his lawn is when somebody calls and complains. Three or four days later, he will mow or mow at the lawn. But the backyard, there's grass that tall, and it's been that way for 15 years and never been corrected. But because the code enforcement says, "You don't have to maintain the backyard, folks. Do what you want to." There's another gentleman that just moved in across the street that cut a limb off a tree in the front yard, and it's been laying there ever since the day that he moved in. Corner little piece there in this yard, grass that tall, never been cut and never will be cut, because nobody enforces anybody to do it. I, for one, would like to see if the problem with code enforcement, and I know they have a terrible job, they've gotta please everybody, but they can't go out and just be completely hard and out of line. They gotta have a balance. But if the problem is not enough personnel, I, for one, will work for free if somebody will enforce what I find. And there are many people in our area that feel the same way. And I'm sure you all feel the same way every time you drive around town and you see grass that tall.
Sir.
Ditches not have been mowed...
You're dressing, Count.
I'm sorry. And ditches that haven't been mowed since springtime. I have spoke to a lot of realtors. They will not take customers from out of town up Veterans Avenue. You go out 116 north and 116 south, and it's the same way, unsightly. And it should not be condoned. And I'm sure that we can do better, but please, whatever you do, pass something in the code that either they clean up their backyards, mow properly, grass in chain link fences that high, that has never been cut, never. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum?
Robert Sizemore, 106, Sheila Court. I wrote this down so I could keep it under five minutes. What I'd like to talk to the council about today is the Coppers Cove Fire Department. Let's be honest, Coppers Cove Fire Department's not the highest paid fire department in the area, not even close. Yet these professionals step forward every day. They come to work, they do what they're supposed to do, they go home, they miss birthdays, they miss holidays, sleepless nights, that they put forth so much for this city. I want to ask the city council, what are we doing right now to relieve the pressure from the fire department? We have four ALS ambulances, we have staff to support one, maybe two per shift. I know recruitment is, I know it's hard to recruit, okay? But other cities are doing it, we're being outpaced. We need to figure out some way to entice these individuals to come into the city and work. I speak as a former fireman and paramedic. I know the toll that the work takes. Like I said, missed dinners, kids blowing out candles without mom or dad, and still these people come to work, put on uniform day after day. The truth is, when anyone calls 911 and your child can't breathe, your spouse collapses, or your parents' heart stops, it's these men and women who show up. They treat, they transport, they clean up, they restock, and they get ready to do again. It's a never-ending cycle. So I say this as forcefully as I can. They deserve more than rumors. They deserve more than suspicion. They deserve more than whispers of scandal. They deserve our gratitude. They deserve a city that stands behind them for what they do every day, and they are severely underpaid for what they do. Because make no mistake, the only drive that these individuals have is to make a difference. If we, as a city, cannot stand behind them, shame on us. If we, as a community, cannot stand behind them, shame on us. These men and women of Coppers Cove Fire Department have earned our respect, they have earned our support, and they've earned it not with words, but with sacrifice. So the next time you see a fireman or paramedic or a police officer on the street, instead of whispering of conspiracy or whispering a cover-up, walk up, shake their hand, and tell them simply, "Thank you. Thank you for what you do," because they deserve it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum? All right, we'll move to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 1, Consideration and Action on Approval of City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes for August 19th, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 2, Consideration and Action on Approval of City Council Regular Meeting Minutes for August 19th, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 3, Consideration and Action on Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Interlocal Government Agreement with the Coppers Cove Independent School District for Policing Services, Eddie Wilson, Police Chief. Item 4, Consideration and Action on Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into an Interlocal Government Agreement to Share Sports and Event Facilities with the Coppers Cove Independent School District, Jeff Stotter, Director of Park to Recreation. Item 5, Consideration and Action on Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Amendment Number 1 to the Project Design Professional Services Agreement to Fries and Nichols, Inc., for the Inclusion of Construction Professional Phase Services for the Northeast Waste Water Treatment Plant Blowers and Valves Replacement Project, Chris Altott, Assistant Public Works Director. Item 6, Consideration and Action Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with SCS Engineers to Continue the Environmental Monitoring and Solid Waste Compliance Services for the Post-Closure Process for the Landfill, Chris Altott, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Larry Scott, Director of Solid Waste. Item 7, Consideration and Action on Resolution Number 2025-20, Adopting the Strategies and Investment Policy for the City of Coppers Cove, Veli Akki, Director of Financial Services.
All right, council, these are consent agenda items. Is there any item that you wish to pull and consider separately? If not, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, approve Consent Agenda Items F1 through F7.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Ms. Hogan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There is no public hearings for tonight, so we move, we're going to go a little bit out of order to accommodate some scheduling. And we're going to go down to item I, reports from staff, outside entities, advisory committees, boards, item I1.
Quarterly Activity Report for the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance, Keith Sled, Executive Director of the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. Hope everyone had a good weekend, had a chance to relax a little bit. Enjoyed that rain we got yesterday, or Sunday, too. This is just a list of the current stuff we're working on. The green stuff is just what we're kind of focused on now. We hopefully think the Highway 9 ramps will be contracted out this month so that construction can start on that, which will be a great thing. The DEAG grant for the railhead energy resiliency should be ribbon-cut sometime in the October timeframe. We're waiting to pick, or to coordinate schedules now. I'm sure the city will get an invitation to that as well. And then we are working on the DEAG grant that we're going to put in in the next, in October, for the next round of DEAG that comes out. A couple of updates for you. The Army's FY '26 draft budget is out. It does have a little bit of an increase from last FY. And it does include a 3.8% pay raise for all service members. And you can see a little bit of an increase for BEH and a little bit for the base allowance for subsistence. The 3.9% for BEH is overall. We don't know how that will impact each individual installation yet. It'll take them a little while to compute that once that's done. The one good thing is this budget actually raises the strength, in strength of the Army, by almost 12,000 soldiers to 454,000, which is what it was back prior to 2023. So there've been some reductions over the last couple of years, this kind of brings that back. All that goes back to the success they've had with recruiting over the last year. You can see the highlights there. There are some conversions of armored brigade combat teams, striker brigades, infantry brigade combat teams, modernization initiatives that will go into those. The other piece is that Third Armored Cavalry Regiment will return, the current Third Striker Cavalry Regiment. Those strikers will go away, and they'll pick up armored vehicles, Bradley's tanks, M109 helicopters and all that. So it'll become Back to the Future for Third Armored Cavalry Regiment. Should be a good thing. Overall, for the installation, with all the Army's modern initiatives that they've announced now, the post will grow at about 300 to 400 more soldiers. So you'll probably have anywhere from 60 to 100 more family members that will come to the post over the next year plus. The DEAG project for 2025, it's really FY '26, but we're doing it in '25, just the way the state has it set up. We did meet last week with the city managers and county judges for the coordinating board. They did select a project. The project we're going to go after this year will be the first phase of the Aquifer Recovery and Storage System. And so there is no local cost share. We've already got the money for local cost share. There's no additional requirements for any of the cities or counties to put any funding in other than just routine staffing costs. Project sponsor's going to be Bell County. They volunteered at the meeting. We appreciate their support, just as Coppers Cove has volunteered and supported projects in the past, is currently supporting two of them. The one last thing I'd like to bring up to you is a small modular reactor. And when I say that's a small modular nuclear reactor, it's not really new technology. The Navy has operated these since 1954 in variety of ships, and we haven't lost one yet. The Army and DOD have put a focus on small modular nuclear reactors as backup power systems for installations. There is one in development, actually is in testing right now, in Idaho, at a facility. There are five installations that were selected to be pilots, potential pilots, I say that. We don't know who's going to be first, but Fort Hood is one of those. And there is a good chance for it to come, one to come here at some point in the next couple of years. They're supposed to have one in operation within the next three years, is what they've been given orders by DOD. So we'll see where that goes. Once we hear more information on that, we'll let you know. For the area, it's actually a good benefit. It'll bring a new industry we don't currently have here because there'll be other businesses that will come in as part of that. But also, it allows backup power on the installation, which, as you know, like with Yuri, when there's a finite amount of power, Fort Hood is one of the locations that gets prime power. But if they don't need that, that gets to go into the communities to one of the other facilities. So it works that well for that well as well. So we'll see where this goes. We don't know yet when they're going to make the announcement. We think they'll make the, between now and probably January, February, they'll make some decisions. Hopefully, we'll have more information after that about who will get the first one. I didn't give this to you last time because it was still within the governor's veto period following the special session. As you know, I'm the chair for the Governor's Committee to Support the Military. We had nine initiatives that were up there. We'd had some success with the disabled property tax exemption. We didn't get the additional funding that we were after. They did expand it some. Essentially, it now includes Cocker Heights and Lampasses County and a couple of other smaller jurisdictions. But the pie didn't get any bigger that the cities and counties get reimbursed from, so they're going to get a smaller slice of that pie. So that'll be the focus for the next session, is how do we expand that reimbursement funding? We'll see where that goes. Concurrent jurisdiction for juvenile crime was a significant one that the Department of Defense wanted. In every state, it's not just Texas, crimes on federal installations that are committed by juveniles, why is that? Serious crimes, not routine stuff. They're supposed to be prosecuted by the local federal district attorney, so in our case, Waco. None of these attorneys have, or the federal attorneys, have juvenile facilities, juvenile crime courts, or any kind of process for committing juvenile crimes. So they kind of potentially have the way to slip under the radar. What this bill will allow it to do is Texas will enact it. That allows the installation of local communities to negotiate then on how they would handle federal crime, or juvenile crime on the federal installation to be adjudicated in local communities through their existing processes. So it allows that kind of a loophole to be resolved. And I know they're in discussions now, I won't say they, the lawyers are, about how they're going to work this out. Four and five on military spouse licensure, it's been a hot one for the Department of Defense for several years. Texas was pretty good with this one. If you came to Texas, went and sent a bill 1200 four years ago, and you had a current license or certification, you send a copy of that, copy of your PCS orders signed you to Texas, to that agency in Texas, and they would give you two options. One, that you could work with your current license for three years and get a letter of authorization, or you get a Texas license, and both of those were free. This is kind of upped it. Some of the spouses were having trouble getting their current status from their existing jurisdiction, and I'll just pick on Illinois a little bit. Spouses were getting it for six months or so for them to get a response about, hey, here's your license, yes, you're in good standing from the state. So Senate Bill Four eliminated that by giving them a six-month waiver of having a temporary authority to use a license. But five kind of came out of the blue, and the way it's written, it's going to, if you're a military spouse, service member, or a veteran, and you come to the state of Texas, if your license is similar to the Texas requirements, you're going to get the authority to use that license here in Texas. So we're still waiting on the final, I guess, review by the policy folks, how it's going to be implemented. But it went into effect one September, so it should come out pretty quick. DEAG, we didn't get an increase. We'd gone after 50 million in funding, and it was in the original budget, but through some budgetary shenanigans, they unfunded the governor's office at one point. When they refunded it, it came back to 30 million. And it wasn't anything about DEAG. It was some other riders that were put on his portion of the state budget. And crucial military installations are training areas, particularly this adds space installations to the current list of installations that are protected in Texas. Army, Navy, and Air Force were already considered as part of this, were in the current law. But Space Force installations weren't. So it makes that, kind of cleaned up that part of it. And the last one makes it illegal for members of Russia, China, Iran, or North Korea, or corporations, and individuals that are part of those corporations or familiar with those nations, to own property in Texas. There's going to be some challenges to this. It's not about individuals who have immigrated to the US. It's about international corporations acquiring land in Texas. And the best example of this would be down at Del Rio, where the Air Force base is. Chinese corporation wanted to put in a wind farm, had either bought some or leased a hundred thousand-plus acres. And they were going to put a wind farm in right next to the installation. That installation trains about 67% of initial Air Force pilots. So it becomes a hazard for those folks as well. I mean, it's certainly not the reason they did it, but it's kind of curious that that's where they chose to put it. So. And I can accept any questions you have. The one thing I would tell you is we're going to go to NTC on 4 to 6 November. I know some of the council members have already been. If one of the council members is interested, they'll let me know. We can get them an invitation to go to that 4 to 6 November. Leave on a Tuesday, come back on a Thursday. Be Second Brigade, that'll be out there. And this will be a larger rotation than normal because the First Cavalry Division headquarters will be out there as well training. So it should be a little bit of a venture. But subject to any questions you have, that's all I've got for you.
Counsel, any questions for Keith?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Keith, I just want to say, like, the nuclear, the small nuclear, that is very fascinating. I think anybody who understands the safety levels of nuclear these days, they wouldn't bat an eye that they get that. But with their, and I don't know if you know this, but is there any conversation about that becoming a bigger project down the road? Like, actually as a primary mode of electricity?
I think there's a good chance that it will long-term, when I say that. I mean, the state of Texas put, I don't remember the exact figure, it started out at a billion, but I don't know if it went to state at a billion through the budget of money dedicated to improving nuclear infrastructure in Texas. Because it is relatively clean energy. And the perceptions of Three Mile Island aside, two of the three reactors of Three Mile Island are still producing electricity today. And there's no leakage at the other one. And it's, I mean, it was kind of a, in the early 80s, it was just a perception of how it went. And it kind of became, I will call it urban legend to a degree. Not saying they're completely safe, but they are relatively safe compared to the other platforms of electricity. And they generate a lot of electricity for a small infrastructure. And these are not the large cooling towers you see on the current plants in Texas. These are containerized. In fact, they're about the size, one of them's about the size of two 20-foot containers. They use different technology. They don't use water. In some cases, they use liquid sodium. So it doesn't have that large cooling water requirement either.
Good question. Anyone else? All right, this is a report only, no action to be taken, so thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, we're going to jump back to Action Items, Item H1.
Consideration and action on ordinance number 2025-31, canceling the November 4, 2025, general election in the city of Coppers Cove and declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Haverlaw. On August 5, 2025, City Council approved ordinance number 2025-22, ordering the general election to be held on November 4, 2025, to elect positions three, four, and five. The filing period for the general election was July 19 through August 18, 2025. Three individuals filed their application for candidacy, one for each position, and they were the following individuals. Howard Hawk filed for place three. John Hale filed for place four. And Del Tredway filed for place five. No other applications were filed with the city secretary's office at the end of the filing period to include no write-in candidates. A certification of unopposed candidates has been prepared and is attached to the agenda item as per Section 2.052 of the Election Code. City Council may by ordinance declare the unopposed candidate selected to office and cancel the November 4, 2025, general election. City staff recommends City Council approve ordinance number 2025-31, canceling the November 4, 2025, general election, and declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office.
All right, council, any questions for Ms. Wilson? Okay. Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-31, canceling the November 4, 2025, general election and declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office.
I second.
Motion made by Ms. Drofus, seconded by Ms. Hogan. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to Item H2.
Consideration and action on awarding a bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Matos Construction Limited for the award of bid number PW 2025-01-84, Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant Blowers and Valves Replacement Project, Chris Altott, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Lisa. Again, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. The item before you is for the awarding of a bid for the Northeast wastewater treatment plant blowers and valve replacement project. The project is to replace four aged blowers at the facility. They've, they were installed originally in 2005, 2006, when the plant was upgraded. It also will replace some valves in the lift station, as well as in each SBR basin. This item originally came to council for an award for professional services on July 16. Council awarded those professional services to Fries and Nichols. FNI is their acronym. Upon final, at that point, FNI did their design work. They did the initial scoping meeting to find which blowers would work best. We've settled on hybrid blowers that both provide the displacement we need, but also some electricity savings for the treatment plant. So aeration electricity is some of the highest costs that wastewater treatment plants face. So we should see some reductions in that electricity bill. This project went to advertisement twice in July, July 18 and July 25. On August 14, a bid opening was held, and the city received one bid from Matos Construction. That bid was received for, in the amount for the base bid, of $2,860,000 with alternate B1 in the amount of $425,000. The total sum of this project is $3,285,000. And city staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to enter into this contract with Matos Construction for the same.
Counsel, any questions for Chris? Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to award bid PW 2025-01-84 at the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant Blowers and Valves Replacement Project in an amount of $3,285,000 to Matos Construction and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for construction of the same.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We move to Item H3.
Consideration and action on ordinance number 2025-30, amending the purchasing policy, Velia Key, Director of Financial Services.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. The changes to the purchasing policy are, in the state of Texas, the competitive bidding threshold for municipalities increased from $50,000 to $100,000. The bill also adjusts the requirements for contacting hubs for all expenditures between $3,000 to $100,000. The increase from petty cash from $50 to $100. The remove of the position of project manager and the addition of the position of assistant city manager to the monetary levels of approval. And the change of the awarding from adapted operating budget to adapted annual budget. At this time, city staff recommends approval of ordinance number 2025-30, amending the purchasing policy.
All right, council, any questions for Ms. Key? All right. Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-30, amending the purchasing policy.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Alzona. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Velia. We move to Item H5. Four, excuse me.
Consideration and action on Resolution Number 2025-20, excuse me, 2025-21, adopting the debt management policy for the city of Coppers Cove, Velia Key, Director of Financial Services.
Thank you, Lisa. The revisions to the policy are, on the letter B, we added management of debt service. We provide detailed explanation of the responsibility of the finance director to provide a report quarterly on all interest earning from the bonds received. The authorized use for the interest earned for debt principal and interest payment ought to fund capital expenditures or cover any payment requirements set by the IRS. The city manager has the authority to designate which project or capital expenditures will receive funding from the interest revenue generated. receive funding from the interest revenue generated by the bonds proceed. The bond fund review committee is responsible for allocating all savings recorded to the contingency account prior to the next quarterly meeting. It provides detail of what form must be completed by the director seeking funding for any expenditures of project, and the project or expenditure must comply with the debt covenant. And the debt service fund must not exceed $500,000. Under, the next revision is under letter E for compliance, it provides detailed explanation of how the finance department must record and report all bond proceeds recorded to the general ledger. At this time, city staff recommends City Council approve resolution number 2025-21, adopting the debt management policy.
All right, counsel, any questions? Okay, action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2025-21, adopting the new debt management policy for the city of Copper's Cove.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Tredway, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Velia. We move to item H5.
Discussion and direction on scheduling the date for a City Council's Strategic Development Retreat and topics of discussion, Ryan Haberlaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, we discussed the development of a new strategic plan during our retreat in February. At that time, City Council said, let's focus on preparing that strategic plan in-house, within ourselves, and working through that process, and so I have previously asked, uh, each of you on when an available date might be. November 14th of this year appears to be a good date for most of the council to attend, and so that'd be my recommendation that you provide direction, that, uh, November 14th is the date we will conduct our strategic development retreat.
Is that, everybody been consulting and agreeing with that?
Okay. I know I cannot attend the 14th. My sub?
I'm not gonna say anything, all right. That's all you need, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we move to item I, uh, item I2.
City Manager's Report, Ryan Haberlaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. So Mayor and Council, as I have done in the past, I will go through this list, uh, rather quickly, uh, as quick as I can, um, I'll focus on one in particular, but then, uh, if you have any questions on any of these other ones, by all means, please stop me, and, uh, let's have that discussion on that one topic. So first, looking at capital projects, emergency generators are continuing, uh, we're really kinda towards on the tail end of that project, and making sure that all of those generator components are installed properly and functioning. Animal control facility, uh, is in a, continuing to, uh, be completed, it looks like we are looking at October-ish, end of October, November time period, for completion of that facility. Senior Center Facility is in a very similar position, we actually just, uh, poured concrete, uh, over the last week and a half of the parking lot, so it's got new concrete out there, but we're also looking for completion of that building towards the end of October. Uh, City Park Improvements are ongoing, the irrigation is currently in the installation process, uh, shouldn't be nearing completion of that very quickly. The municipal court renovation project, uh, you just awarded the, uh, remaining work that needs to be completed, uh, for that project, and it should be complete also in October, so we're gonna have a lot of ribbon cuttings in October, November time period, probably. And, uh, Fire Station Number Three Expansion, uh, the planned completion of that project is in November, uh, so I'm gonna say probably early December, uh, for final completion of that project. City Events and Activities, Department Operations, I just, uh, we just conducted a press conference at four o'clock this afternoon on the investigation with the Fire Department. I have provided each of you the written statement in which that press conference was based on, uh, so if you have any questions regarding that, I'd be happy to discuss that with you. Emergency Notifications and Preparations, it was, uh, just a few weeks ago, uh, we did send out an emergency notifications through what we used to call Code Red. It, it's called Code Red 2.0, or also called On Solve, and those notifications did not go out to everybody, and it was related to a boil water notice, uh, for our community. We recognized it did not go out to everybody, and so we are working with our partner agency, which is SidCog, and the, uh, vendor itself to find out why notifications did not go out on that one notice. Since then, notifications have been going out, uh, as well, but that one that we initiated, um, for some reason, there was some type of issue, so we will be working to resolve that. Central Texas Water Authority, uh, recently held its second-ever board meeting in McLennan County, and, uh, they will be considering the applications of member organizations, you have approved the submission of that application, and so as they go through that process, uh, we'll have more information to report. The Belcor Regional Habitat Conservation Plan, now, I have been telling you, Council, for probably a year, a year and a half, that we're just about to get the last information on it. And this effort to prepare this regional habitat conservation plan has melt, has met, uh, some significant resistance. Uh, the consultant that is, that was hired to prepare the habitat conservation plan was, as soon as it was awarded by Bell County, in which we are a member, we have an interlocal agreement as part of that, uh, award, was bought out by another company, and so it's been that company that's been working on and preparing the regional habitat conservation plan. Uh, there is a disagreement between the committee members, which Copper's Cove is a member, and that consultant on how much more time it's gonna take to complete Phase Three of the plan preparation. Initially, we were supposed to have already received the completion of Phase Three this month, so that in a month and a half, you as council could decide whether we're gonna continue into Phase Four of the plan. We don't have Phase Three, it's not complete, and so, uh, we are now, uh, working through the contract language with the consultant on what actions we will be taking, so, my next report next month, I hope to have some more concrete information to share with you as the council, uh, but we are, I don't, I do not think that we are getting to a point where we will be making, uh, getting to a decision point by the council on whether we're gonna continue into Phase Four. I'll just tell you at this point, right now, I am not entirely convinced that moving on to Phase Four is in the best interest of our residents and our city, so, but I can't make that full determination until we get that Phase Three report. Parkland Dedication Ordinance. Mayor and City Council, you directed the subdivision Technical Advisory Committee and the Quality of Life Committee to meet together and prepare a unified recommendation on a parkland dedication ordinance. The committees met three times, and in those three times, there was no significant progress in a compromised recommendation for City Council. Uh, staff kinda stepped in after that third meeting and began talking and communicating, uh, with the committee members of those two groups to come up with some level of recommendation. Uh, we worked on that for two meetings, and we were making progress on that. Uh, the next meeting that occurred after that, additional members of those, uh, committees attended, and the progress we had made, while it wasn't completely erased or disregarded, it encountered serious setbacks in terms of trying to develop a language for an ordinance that could be recommended to City Council. So you set a six-month deadline. Those committees are not going to meet that deadline, because they should be presenting that to you now, whatever that recommendation is. Um, I am working with, uh, our director liaisons towards, to both of those committees, uh, and we will be working hand in hand with those two committees to prepare a recommendation to bring to council. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have a timeline, uh, because you've already set that timeline, that timeline's come and gone, uh, but I will be trying to work as quickly as possible to bring a recommendation to council, because, quite honestly, at this time, at this point, it is consuming a lot of people's time, both, both personal and professional time, so. Citizen Survey, it is concluded, uh, Mr. Keller and I got to review just the very initial uh, results of that survey. In, in broad scope, we had over 500 respondents, uh, to that citizen survey, uh, it was a statistically random survey, which, which means the survey consultant picked randomly a group of residents to receive the survey, those residents responded, which is, from a statistical standpoint, um, is believed to be more accurate of a representation of our community. So we plan to bring a full report to council in October, and that will also be used in our discussion on the strategic, uh, development planning in November. Street Maintenance Utility, I already shared at the beginning of this meeting that we are having several town hall meetings over the coming weeks, and we are also meeting with individual civic groups, and anybody else that might be interested, please let them know that they can contact, uh, myself, Mr. Keller, or Mr. Osborne on, uh, Burn, excuse me, Mr. Osborne, to, uh, schedule a, uh, discussion with any of those other groups. Uh, Citizen Leadership Academy is progressing well, we have some students in the audience, thank y'all for attending, we really appreciate it. And then the, uh, general election activities, you just took action, we don't have general election activities any longer. Uh, we have unopposed candidates that are now elected to office. And the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget process has officially concluded with City Council's action at the last meeting, and we are currently in the process of preparing our official budget book, and, uh, moving through the closeout process for this current fiscal year. Grant Status, Economic Development Administration, uh, that is the EDA grant that, uh, was awarded to the Economic Development Corporation in partnership with the city, and that, uh, project is close to being bid out, so that the roadway on Mashburn Drive or Road, uh, can be constructed. Uh, OLDCC is the grant for the rail, uh, road study, uh, for the truck rail facility, and that is progressing, we actually, that will be complete at the end of this year. Uh, the DECP grant is also under OLDCC, but that is the $10.3 million, and as Mr. Sled, uh, reported earlier in this meeting, that project will be bid out by TechSot sometime this month. KTEMPO, uh, nothing to report there, the DAG, uh, grant, uh, we continue to work with, uh, the vendor for Fort Hood on the installation of, uh, the Energy Resiliency Project, and, but there's nothing else to report at this time. And then the, uh, railroad crossing elimination grant, we have drafted the, uh, request for qualifications for a vendor to hire to begin doing, uh, the consulting work to, to study our railroad crossings and, uh, the potential of eliminating those crossings. Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions from council.
Counsel, any questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you, Ryan. We've moved to item J, I'm, items for future agendas. Ms. Strophas?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hogan?
None for me, sir.
Mr. Alzona?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
I have nothing.
All right, there is no executive session for tonight, so the time is 6:54, we stand adjourned.